We're ready to go. Motion to open the zoning board of appeals meeting?
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion, open case number 4317.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Public hearing will be held in Town Hall, Conference Room B, room 301, third floor, 10 Pearl Street, on September 19, 2024, at 7:30 PM on petition of Stoughton Fuel Realty. LLC, represented by engineering group PC, case number 4317, for special permit under the town of Stoughton zoning law of November 18, 2015, as amended. Section 5.0, nonconforming use in structures, regulations 5.6, abandonment or nonuse of nonconforming use of structures which have been abandoned or not used for a period of two years shall lose its protected status and be subject to all provisions of the zoning bylaw. Provided, however, by a special permit, the zoning board of appeals may reestablish a nonconforming use of structures otherwise abandoned or not used in order to allow for reestablishment of a gasoline filling station located at 110 Birch Street, further identified in assesses plan 65, plot 57, 58, in neighborhood business zone in said Stoughton. Any person deciding to receive further notice concerning this petition is provided by the general rules of the zoning board of appeal should file a written request containing his or her name and address with the board. Petitioner is representative or any other person designed to be heard in this matter should appear at the time and place. Chairman, upper row chairman, it was in the Patriot Ledger, September 4th and September 11th, 2024.
Motion to wait, reading any of others and take the answers to question eight as written?
All in favor?
Aye.
So like to explain what you'd like to do.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. For the record, my name is Hal Chuba. I'm a consulting engineer in Dallas, Massachusetts, and I hereby present the applicant, Stoughton Fuel Realty LLC, on this special permit application. As you stated, Mr. Chair, this is a special permit to reestablish an existing nonconforming use that has been abandoned over two years, and it's a special permit per section 5.6. The subject property is located at 112 Birch Street in the... I'm kind of confused. I have my easel and my board. I'm not sure if you, we can show the site plan on the, on the, on the screen or... Oh, you don't have it?
No.
Oh.
Can we just keep it here and show that?
Oh, we just have to grab this site, if you don't mind. So the site is located at 110 Birch Street in Stoughton, Massachusetts. That used to be the Cumberland Farms site. I'm sure you're all familiar with the site. The site is at the intersection of Park and Birch. It's... Currently, you still, you all have the existing plan for the, for the site that's the... So the site is located at the intersection of Park and Birch. It measures approximately 16,000 square feet, and it's located in the neighborhood business and also in the, in the zone 3D of the Stoughton Town Hall. The gas station business is not allowed use. That's why we're here for the special permit, the PCC gas station. The existing 400 square foot building that's on the site, the note of the building, there used to be three pumps with the steel canopy that were removed a few years ago. To the east of the building was the, where the underground fuel storage stands that were removed. Currently, there are two driveways from Park Street. One is 40 feet wide, and it's only about 30 feet from the intersection, and another driveway is 70 feet wide. Also, there's one curb cut on Birch Street that's 120 feet wide. My point, proposed to the... Which also controls the, the property in the back at 289 Park, is proposing to demolish the existing building that's on the site, close the two curb cuts on Park and on Birch. Therefore, it'd be using the common access to the site from the Park Street property. Therefore, moving the curb cut from the intersection about 240 feet. Propose a 2,000 square foot building to be used for convenience stores, four multiple pumps with canopy, and the pumps would be installed to the west of the proposed pumps. Parking would be in front of the, of the convenience store, and we would provide about 20% landscape along, along the perimeter of Birch and Park. So prior to this development, I, I requested an informal meeting with all the department heads back in January, I believe, and we met with the planning board, chairman, we met with the planning department, we met with conservation, we met with all 50. I had a different layout at that time to use the existing buildings and put the pumps back on their way. There were a number of issues at that time with the meeting. Access was an issue because of the curb cuts so close to the intersection. The parking was an issue. We didn't have the parking around the building. Stacking was an issue. So we went back and we configured the layout of the site, and we worked out all those issues. Obviously, this is our first step with the zoning board of appeal. If we get, if, if the board grant this tonight, we still have to go for site plan review. We have to go through conservation. We have to go through all the different boards. The, and as I stated, I also submitted the traffic analysis for the, for the, with the application, and also I submitted the documentation that there's adequate utilities on the site because it's an existing site, that we improved the traffic tremendously by move, by shifting the intersection away, the curb cuts away from the intersection and providing proper pedestrian access from the existing sidewalks to the site. We have the parking in compliance with, with the zoning bylaws. Landing would be in compliance with the zoning bylaws, and I believe the proposed building will be in compliance in the, in the zoning bylaws. So basically, we're taking an existing nonconforming building, and we, we have the, I did submit the architectural of the building, and you can see from the architectural that the building is, is what we refer to Cape Park design that would be fitting in within the neighborhood. My client also has a petition of support that was signed by 150 residents that live around the area. And again, this is a special permission, a special permit to reestablish an existing nonconforming use that was there, and we hope that, you know, the, the board will look at this favorably tonight, and I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
So I know you guys had a lot of support documents that were signed. Did you have anybody there from Birch Street specifically?
Yeah, we had many people.
From Birch Street? And is there anything that you're going to do to mitigate any potential negative impacts on some of those residents that'll be affected? You know, lights, noise, I don't know how long you'll, if you'll have the lights on throughout the night, that sort of thing?
The business hours, I'm, do you have, I'm not sure what the business hours would be probably like. From what time in the morning, so it'll be probably six? He's the applicant, so.
Yeah, we haven't decided on that yet, but most probably it's going to be 9 AM to 9 PM.
And the lights will be off once the, the business is off? Yeah, they'll shut all the lights off, except for safety, whatever they have in the parking lot, yes.
Has any type of environmental study or anything of that nature been done? Is that a part of your process that you're going to complete?
Sorry, can you repeat your question?
Environmental, you have a 21E.
Yes, we do have a E21 report.
Yeah.
And it was normal, and there was no problem, we found.
Other than that, the bank won't issue any, they won't prove any money.
More so.
So I don't know if you submitted those, those signatures into the record, but if you want them to be part of our file.
I, I did submit it to, yes, but we do have a copy here.
Yeah, we need to send the email.
We, we have a copy, we have a copy.
These are the originals, if you'd like to have them.
They're online, but he has a copy.
Do you have any idea why this use was discontinued?
For Cumberland, I think maybe that's, that's not a high performing site, and also really, I mean, if it wasn't for the applicant that he controls the, the property in the back, it was very hard for people to get in and get out. The parking wasn't, wasn't that convenient at that time because that's, that's with the second layout that I, that I explained before, we tried to, to reestablish the, the gasoline in the same layout that they had it, and we had a lot of pushback from planning at that time. And I, I think this is because he own, he controls the, the property in the back, we were able to share the driveway, so we pushed this way, we were able to provide all the parking that we need in front of the building, and really, you worked it out, that much better layout than was there before, so.
This is more to the building inspector. I'm just wondering, it appears that this is a slight expansion of the nonconforming use, and I don't know if our, I know our bylaw allows us to grant a special permit to reestablish an abandoned use, but then I would think that we need to also have additional relief for, to expand that use.
I agree. So just so you know, I met with town engineer, and we all agreed it's, it's a much better layout than this is. The reestablishment of the abandoned use is one thing that you guys can work on, but the other thing is the, the building's changed, so it's not, it's not reestablishing an existing building, it's building a new building. So I think that's two separate items.
I mean, it sounds like you have other permits that you're going to need to pursue anyways, but I, I don't believe this is the only relief the zoning board is going to need to give you, is my thought. We can only work off of this one right now, but I believe there'll be, need to be another application for us.
For a special permit on the building?
For the expansion of the nonconforming use, increase of additional fuel pump and change in the building, yeah.
Do you understand that?
Yeah, I mean, because of the four pumps and the three pumps.
In the building?
And the size of the building.
Well, the building's changing.
Yeah, no, I understand.
I mean, we like it.
No, no, I understand. I mean, I, too bad, we could have had it under one application at that time, but so it's, I mean, if the use, this is the first step. If we can't reestablish the use, I think we can't do with the other one. So if we need to get another special permit, we'll apply for another.
It's really your call. We can continue it, and you can advertise for the second one. We can do it all as one, or we can vote on this one and then file another application.
Continue this one and read, but then, okay.
You'd have to, you'd have to apply and advertise because this was...
No, no, I understand. I understand, and I, you know, so I'll, I'll be jacked. I'll, I'll reach out to you, just then if you can take a look at the plans and identify what we need, it's just the expansion of the, the, yeah. I, I understand.
It's just words, but it's...
No, I, I understand. So I think Mr. Patel would, I mean, either we can, we can close tonight and have... I guess we can continue, but we can discuss, since we're here, and we're talking about the use, so if there's anything that we need to address on the next hearing, so we can...
Okay, that's it, that's all I have.
I have my questions.
Yeah, I have one question. I, I was listening to your presentation, and you mentioned the facility to the, to the west of the proposed gas station, and that business, if I understand correctly, or those businesses are not being, are not changing, you're merely just using their property for improved access, right?
Correct.
Okay, and so I'm looking at the, the plan here, and it looks like the, the access points are in the other property, right? The property line kind of goes down the middle, and so one is in the other property, right? So I guess I'm, I'm still kind of contemplating how the permit would work if it's attached to 110 Birch Street, but you're, you know, part of why it's approved relates onto another property which, you know, could be dealt with separately.
I, I think if we get approved through this board, probably one of the conditions would be to submit an A and R to the planning board so we can combine the two properties and remove that line, that common line that in the, in the middle.
Okay. You, you would be agreeable to a condition such as that?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. I don't have any other questions right now.
All my questions are answered. All my questions.
Anybody in the audience have any questions, or anything to say about it? Mr. Paul, you have to come up and identify yourself and...
Richard Power in San Aglencro Boulevard, precinct one. I'm on the Port of Health, and as I remember, there's a lot of pollution in that area. There's wells down that have been drawn down in there to try to bring back the plume. Has anyone checked on that to find out what the story in that area is? This is the Bob's Market area, right?
Yep.
Yeah, there's all old wells down there that were trying to bring the plume back because it was polluted. That's why it was originally shut down.
So basically, what, what they're asking for now is to reestablish the use, and that's all. Once they get that, their next step would be to go in front of engineering and conservation and planning board. So that, that would come up if they get what they're asking for.
Good evening. My name is Tony Tomy, and I...
What's your last name?
Tomy, T W O M E Y, and I work at Cumberland Farms, and it's going to be a squeeze. They had a, someone was killed there about a month ago in the intersection. That intersection you're talking about with the new gas station, there's a road coming off the highway, and there's a road, you know, there's the Cumberland Farms, and it's a tight squeeze to get in and out of there. Now you've got another gas station right here. The people, if they're on the far side of the road, they're going to have to cut these people off to come into the gas station.
I don't think you're in the right place.
Cross them, target?
What's that?
Next.
No, 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 this is down by Bob's Market.
You're absolutely right. I'm in the wrong place. Thank you anyway. Thank you anyway. I was thinking of you guys.
Anybody else?
Hi, Paul Carter, 115 Birch Street. It's, I know you have to grant him a special permit to move ahead, but it's a nonconforming use in a neighborhood business, so the special permit lapsed. I mean, I had a monitor on my property for 10 years. There was a gas leak there. We're in litigation against Cumberland Farms, so I'm adamantly against a gas station going at that location, so thank you.
Anybody else? Okay. What's the worst of the void?
Are we, are we going to continue this?
That's what I was under the impression.
You're asking us to continue, we can continue, and you're going to address both the ones you want.
Yes. When do we want to continue it? How much time?
We're talking a couple of months.
Isn't it two weeks to advertise?
We're talking November.
The next meeting in November?
What's that?
The next.
After the next meeting.
But you have to advertise.
No, I, I understand. What's the next?
Sure, we're looking, we're looking at November 7th.
November 7th?
Okay.
But you, you'll have to advertise it pretty quick.
Right, I'll, I'll reach out to the, I, the time does it anyway, the advertising.
Yeah, there's just a timeframe that you've got to...
No, I mean, I'm, for me, I'll just, I'll see. Turn it on pretty fast at places, I don't have an issue with that, so.
All right, motion to contain case number 4317 to November 7th, 2024, at 7:30 PM.
All in favor?
Aye.
See you November 7th.
Thank you, guys.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion, open case number 4316.
How do we go backwards? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. I gotta read it. Public hearing will be held in Town Hall, Conference Room B, room 301, third floor, 10 Pearl Street, on September 19th, 2024, at 7:32 PM on a petition of CJ Shaughnessy Crane Service, Inc., represented by attorney Barry Akkrimmons, case number 4316, for special permit under the town of Stoughton zoning bylaw of November 18, 2015, as amended. Section 3.1.4, table of use regulations, principal uses, E wholesale transportation and industrial item number three, construction industry including suppliers, and accessory uses, item number 10, accessory outside storage clearly necessary for, to the operation and conduct a permitted principal wholesale transportation industrial or commercial use provided. It shall be screened from outside view by an enclosed solid fence or wall and gate at least 10 feet in height or a solid wall of evergreens when planted not more than three feet apart and at least six feet in height, and a solid gate at least 10 feet in height, not more than 20 feet in width, in order to allow for the redevelopment of an existing retail store building and parking area into a commercial warehouse with inside and outside storage of construction vehicles and equipment located at 501 Technology Center Drive, further identified in assesses plan 96, plot 52, in the highway business zone in said Stoughton. Any person designed to receive further notice concerning this petition is provided by the general rules of the zoning board of appeal should file a written request containing his or her name and address with the board. Petitioner is representative or any other person designed to be heard in this matter should appear at the place time designated. Chairman, upper row chairman, it was in the Patriot Ledger, September 4th and September 11th, 2024. Mr. Crimmens.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. For the record, attorney Barry Akkrimmons in 901 West Street in Stoughton, here on behalf of the applicant, which the formal name is CJ Shaughnessy Crane Service, Inc. They are currently located down in Avon on Bodwell Street Extension on the, so the opposite side of the Avon Industrial Park where they operate a couple of facilities there. They are looking to purchase this site, which is the Coles Department Store site at 501 Technology Center Drive. Some of you may have read in the papers that Coles is sort of downsizing a lot of their stores, this, this being one of them. So this property came up for sale by the property owner, which is RK Centers, and Shaughnessy has entered into a purchase and sales agreement with RK to, to purchase this property, to convert the Coles into the building, into basically a combination warehouse, storage facility, along with offices for their operation, and in addition to have outside storage in the, in the parking area that currently exists up there. So our request tonight, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, we're asking for two special permits. One is for the use under the section that was read by the chair for construction industry, which is a use allowed by special permit in the highway business zone. And then the second one is a special permit for the accessory use for the outside storage of, of construction equipment and vehicles. With me here tonight, first, I'll introduce our project engineer from Bowler Engineering is seated behind me, Mr. Randy Byron, we're the project engineers for the site. And seated to my right is Mr. Jamie Shaughnessy of Shaughnessy Crane. I'd like, if I may, Mr. Chairman, to allow Jamie to sort of give a little bit of an overview about Shaughnessy, the company, their current operation, and why it is that they're looking to move into Stoughton. So Jamie?
Thank you, Barry, and good evening, everyone. Yeah, Barry gave a great overview. We're a crane trucking and rigging company located down the street in Avon. We've been growing pretty well over the last few years. We have three buildings on Bodwell Street currently, and storage is actually a large part of our business. We work for a lot of contractors and subcontractors throughout Massachusetts and New England who ship their equipment to us to store before it gets installed in a building, so think, anything going in a new construction building from HVAC to electrical equipment to roofing materials to windows, it all gets shipped to us, and we store it until it's ready to go out to site, and we deliver it on our trucks. We've been running out of space the last few years, and we've been piecing together lots of small leases with other business owners in the area in Stoughton, Avon, and Randolph, and we've been looking for something close by to us that, so we can kind of keep our operations centralized, and when this opportunity came up, it seemed like, it seemed like a perfect opportunity to us, and I've been discussing it with Barry, and we think, we think we can do it in a way that doesn't really disrupt any of the surrounding areas, but that's essentially it, and we'd be happy to answer any questions.
Can I speak briefly about the nature of your sort of deliveries come and go?
Yeah, yeah, the, the other, the other part of that is our shipping and receiving operations are from 7 AM to 2 PM, so as I'm sure you guys are aware, there's two restaurants, out parcels on the perimeter, currently in Olive Garden and Smokey Bones, and the business hours really shouldn't interrupt those operations too much because we operate mainly in the morning and early afternoon, whereas... whereas they're afternoon and evening.
So, Mr. Chairman, the accessory storage provision that Jim has noted, she had read, requires that the site be enclosed by a 10-foot-high fence of evergreens. And so we will be doing that in a manner that will basically shield the materials that are stored on site from anyone that drives behind there. It will really close, close the entire site to a, you're all familiar with the site. You know, the Coles building is on the far left side as you come up from, under 139, on Technology Center Drive. The restaurants that Jamie alluded to are on the far right side. They're off-site, but they're adjacent to us there. Those parcels were brought home by RK. But so the large parking area presently is, we might have to scope the outside storage. And then the building will be warehouse storage and office. This application before you folks tonight is one of three permits, I guess two or four perhaps, permits, and we need, we need these two special permits. We'll be on board shortly, given there's some concealment that was in an appropriate location. Improved special permits will be filed with the planning board for site plan approval. And then thirdly, we'll be filing with conservation, wanting to notice and capture some wetlands helping that, so that the area between the site and Route 24, so we'll be filing with the concrete. But there's a great deal of engineering that is required for both site plan approval and for the notice of intent on that conservation measure. So it would be somewhat cost prohibitive to do all of that work unless this would work to improve the use. So that's why we're before you first, before going to be the planning board concrete.
I don't think there's anything else supporting the building footprint staying the same. There's some overhead doors being added along the front. There's some elevations that aren't included. I can submit.
Yeah, the only thing else that I'll add is that, you know, the building footprint itself is staying the same. There's some overhead doors and some man doors that are being added along the front of it, along the front of where the previous Coles was. But beyond that, you know, the driveways are remaining the same, same location. The general configuration of the parking is similar, but we're removing some landscaped islands within the parking area to allow some more room for some of the equipment. And of course, we would get into more of that as we file our site plan approval application with the planning board, so.
Just finally, Mr. Chairman, as Randy mentioned, sorry, the building itself is concerned. We're not touching the footprint of the building. We are adding, we're currently, you know, you have those two entrances to Coles, there's one sort of towards the left side of the building, there's another one towards the right side of the building. We're reconfiguring that with the overhead doors that Randy alluded to. And then the only other thing is the signage on the building that will be obviously changed from Coles to Shaughnessy. And that's the only change to the exterior of the building, we're not changing the facade or anything of that nature. All the other work will take place inside the building in terms of retrofitting it from a retail department store to a warehouse facility. So without Mr. Chairman, we're happy to answer any questions the members may have.
Where on site would be the exterior or, you know, outdoor storage space?
Pretty much within the entire parking field.
Yeah, I can point to it.
Yeah, taking this with you.
So, so as you can see here, we retained the parking along the perimeter, parking along the front, and then we removed the parking spaces here because these are the two overhead doors that we'd be pulling equipment into. And then the storage would really be kind of just in the heart of the lot here. And when we say outdoor storage, it's primarily two things. It would be trailers and then we store large HVAC equipment outside. So if you think a large air handling unit that goes on a roof, it gets shipped to us in white shrink wrap and it just stored outside on wood dunage until it's ready to be shipped to the site. So it would really be just this main area here where the storage would be.
Is there going to be like all fencing kind of along there?
Yeah, so it's actually, the proposed fencing, if you look at this, like this line with the little squares on it. So the proposed fencing actually goes around the perimeter of the entire property.
I just want to make sure here. In your application, you mentioned something about. Conversion of an existing multifamily dwelling, is that, does that sound hard?
I apologize. That, this application followed the one I did for the next, for the next case that I neglected to, in my cutting and pasting, I neglected to take that sentence out. I figured you would pick up on that, I agree.
You've also mentioned that there was going to be an increase in tax revenue and employment opportunities to the town. And I'm just trying to understand how that's true if we're going from a retail use to a retail use. And it appeared to me that we probably have more employees at Coles than we do at Wood.
Yeah, I think, I think my sense there was the improvements to the site, you know, I guess I hope for my client's sake that the taxes don't go up too much, but my sense is that they probably will. In terms of employment, Jamie, you want to talk about how many, how many folks you have there either construction and post-construction?
Yeah, so construction, obviously, I mean, there'd be lots of different contractors working on that site. In the early, in the early days of us moving in there, this is really an expansion opportunity for us. So in the early days, I don't see us utilizing 100% of the building. We probably have five to 10 full-time employees who report to the building with other employees, you know, reporting to the warehouse and yard throughout the day to kind of handle equipment that's incoming and outgoing. Longer term, we would probably plan to move our corporate office from our HQ, from our existing location on Bodwell, to the Coles building because there's a much larger office footprint there, whereas in our existing building, we have about 4,000 square foot office space, we have only 10 offices and we're already, we've already outgrown that. So longer term, I could see definitely more employees in the building.
And I think the other element would be the potential for additional tax revenue from the exercise taxes for the vehicles.
Much customer, what's your customer flow expected to be?
So in terms of shipments from third-party shippers, you know, there could be anywhere from 10 to 20 trucks a day, incoming and outgoing. In terms of incoming and outgoing shipments, so like, to prelude your question, like third-party shippers who deliver the equipment to us, there are probably, there's anywhere from 10 to 20 trucks a day that deliver equipment to our warehouse. As far as customers, it's really our, you know, our subcontractor customers who are coming to inspect their equipment after it's been delivered because everything we're storing, we don't own. It's the customer who maintains ownership of it. And I would say there'd be anywhere from five to 10 individual customers per day who would come to the warehouse. So believe it or not, we have, you could even see our existing warehouses in Avon. We have lots and lots of equipment stored inside and outside, but it's a relatively quiet site.
So when I go to Coles right now and I want to leave Coles, I have to take a right and pull a return in order to get back out. What's the highway, how are you with the trucks?
Maneuver, getting into the highway?
Yeah.
It could either go up the BJ's way.
Yeah, yeah, so two things. Well, one, they could take a right and go up the BJ's way because that is accessible past the Amazon facility over there. Although it is a windy road, but it is accessible for our trucks. In the future, and it's obviously a completely different conversation, we would want to potentially petition to the town to maybe remove a part of that island that you're speaking of. So you could take a left turn out of the main entrance to Coles, but that's, that'll be down the line.
Not sure I'm understanding which way you're talking about to go up the BJs because that doesn't seem accessible to trucks either. Maybe I'm missing.
Yeah. I think not so much going up through the Amazon facility as taking that right that brings you by BJ's, which is how I think.
Yeah, yeah.
Then you have all those people and that's an awful little puppy.
You wouldn't go through the BJ's popular. I'm talking about going the roadway that runs alongside the side of the BJ's and then it comes out onto the road that would be sort of the back of the BJ's self-service gas station area. So not going through the BJ's parking lot, but just maintaining that road and then you're bearing right and you're going out by Cube Smart.
So, I mean, we need to.
Up in front of the storage facility.
Yeah, no, I know where you access, I guess I've just never done that myself. I feel like we need to come up with some type of condition language to make sure that trucks aren't trying to turn around. That we have the right, the right, the ability to actually adjust that way.
I would also just add that the trucks that would be delivering, coming to and from our facility are no different than the trucks that currently deliver our goods to Coles.
Okay. And then, I guess I'm, so you mentioned the 10-foot fence for evergreens. Is it going to be a fence or evergreens or both?
We would definitely do a fence. I think the language and the bylaws, that's what it said in the, yeah, it says either, but we would propose a fence.
What's this fence looking like coming in? I'm envisioning right now that we have a department store and two restaurants and now we're going to end up with a two restaurants and a large site that is fenced in with a lot of trailers sitting on it. So how visible are those trailers going to be from the roadway, from the providing restaurants? What are we doing to make this not just look like, you know? I want your business to be successful, but I don't want our community to just have a storage.
Yeah, no, absolutely.
Hazarded storage site sitting in the middle of everybody, not that.
Yeah.
I think with a 10-foot-high fence, that's, and to the relative, the relationship between, you know, Technology Center Drive, you can go up there, you really, other than to see probably the top of the building, I don't think you're going to see much in terms of any of the vehicles or any of the equipment that's being stored there.
Yeah, so, and just to further clarify, outdoor storage, our actual cranes and trucks would remain, would most likely remain parked in Avon, but when we say trailers, we're not even talking about the typical box storage trailers that you might see. They're actually flatbed trailers, which are usually about four feet high. So those wouldn't be visible behind the 10-foot fence. And then most of the units, like the rooftop units that we store on our site are usually anywhere from six to eight feet tall. So a 10-foot fence would, would definitely block most of that. And I'd also add that even, even without the fence, believe it or not, it would be, it's, it's a tidy property. It's not like a scrapyard storage. It's, it's, it's clean.
Is this fence going to be okay? What kind of a fence are you thinking of?
Well, I mean, the bylaw stipulates a privacy fence, so I imagine that's not a chain link fence, so it would be some sort of solid fence. We haven't actually determined exactly what color or material that would be just yet.
Okay, I mean, I, yeah, I guess I'm still just, you know, I think about what we have in that vicinity and we have some chain link fences with plastic things running through them and they get broken and they're not solid, so. I'm not trying to tell you, you mentioned a solid fence, to a certain type of fence at this stage, but I think there should be maybe generals of what type of fence you could be using, you know, that is not going to be a chain link fence with green and blue pieces stuck to it.
No, yeah, I can assure you it'll be a clean-looking, solid fence.
I think certainly, not to suggest this board needs to defer it to the planning board, but certainly as part of site plan review process, you know, the planning board will obviously be looking for that level of detail as well.
We realize that, but we also have to, in special permit conditions, we have to talk about neighborhood character, safety, parking and loading. I think that I understand typically if you're done a site and review, but if you start with us, it needs to be a level of detail that's provided to us when we're looking at two restaurants that even if you're not there, there's going to be customer, customer base that could potentially, you know, be looking to probably dress that in the property. So my next question, what type of security and safety features are you putting in to address the abutments?
Yeah, so, well, obviously the fence, but also all of our properties currently have both lighting on the front and cameras. And our existing storage yard at 108 Paltry, Avon, also has barbed wire around the top. I don't know if that is something that would either be recommended or not, but if that were, we would have installed that as well.
Is there to be an access point on the portion of the lot that the restaurant uses?
Yeah, so I can show. So we are proposing, well, first off, obviously, this would be an access point. And then another access point, there will be a slide, a proposed sliding gate right here, and then another one right here, and then the restaurants are located there.
We're not creating any new curb cuts off of Tech Center Drive, we're using the existing two curb cuts that are there today.
I think that covers my questions for now.
Yeah, sorry. So, you know, I think, listening to some of the questions that are asked, you know, I'm kind of thinking a lot about, you know, security and safety and, you know, access and/or unlawful access being one concern. I'm also wondering about, you know, you have all these trailers in the front lot there. Let's assume that they're secured behind a fence. You know, can you tell me a little bit about how long any one trailer might be in that lot and then how the contents of the trailer are verified before they're stored?
Yeah, so every trailer that goes in that lot, as I mentioned, they're flatbed trailers, so we wouldn't be storing anything in box trailers. And each of those steel flatbed trailers would either be completely empty or contain crane parts. And when I say crane parts, there's two types of components. One would be crane counterweights. That's the, the counterweight that goes on a crane, so you can hoist heavy loads. And those counterweight trailers essentially contain two counterweights, one in the front, one in the back, which is basically kind of like a circular. one in the back, which is basically kind of like a circular piece of steel. So very small, but heavy. And then there's also crane jib sections. If you've ever seen, if you've ever seen like a tower crane, for example, the way that's structured, a crane jib looks similar, so it's just another, it's basically metal components. And each one of those trailers has a specific label that corresponds to one of our crane numbers. So, to put it simply, it's very dense, heavy metal that sits on a trailer that is well labeled and no one would be able to tamper with it or take it unless they had a piece of heavy equipment capable of lifting it. As far as, oh, and then to answer your final question, those trailers, that would be the main kind of home for those trailers, and they would go out in the morning with a job and come back at the end of the day and be parked there overnight.
Okay, so, looking at it from another direction, how would your organization know if there's a trailer there that shouldn't be?
That shouldn't be?
Yes.
Well, that's a good question. I mean, outside of just our general yard crew, so we have two yard foremen who are dispatchers who are responsible for knowing everything that comes in and out of the yard, and they always just have a constant pulse on what is there. That, too, I mean, it would stick out like a sore thumb probably because all of our trailers are the same exact shade of blue. And lastly, all of our trailers have GPS on them, so we know where each of them are at any given time. Obviously, that wouldn't help us identify a trailer that shouldn't be there, but it would be picked out very quickly.
No, I think, I think some of the commentary you gave around like, you know, similar colors and, you know, yard foremen, you know, that, that's definitely some things that contribute to, you know, identifying, I think it might not belong. You know, you talked about what's going to be outside. Can you give me a sense of what would be inside the building as well? I mean, is there anything that might be viewed as hazardous?
So I should have actually said that upfront, so we don't store a single hazardous material. Everything that is stored inside the building is just smaller components of things that go inside buildings. So small heat pumps and heat exchangers, plumbing equipment, HVAC equipment, small electrical equipment. We store lots of glass for various glass companies. We store roofing materials for roofers. We store everything from food equipment for food equipment installers, fitness equipment, just all sorts of palletized equipment and nothing hazardous.
Okay, I think I know the answer to my next question, but I'm going to ask it anyway. Any kind of light manufacturing or repair type work that would happen within the facility?
Nothing, no. So we don't do any manufacturing whatsoever in any sort of, you know, shop repairs, equipment cleaning, all sort, all that sort of stuff is in our main shop in Avon. This is purely just for.
For storage.
Just for storage.
Okay, thank you. I have any other questions right now?
No questions.
If you put up a solid fence, which will be in front of Kohl's and Smokey, Smokey Bones, some of your trucks need pretty good turn rates to get into the, to the lot. Is it, is it going to be enough room for them to make that swing?
Yeah, so, I'll point out once more. So if not coming in through the rear of the property, the only other entrance to, for a truck to get into the main storage area would be this gate right here. And it's a very, if you were to see it in person, this is a very wide curve coming in here. So we don't, we don't foresee an issue. We're also proposing a sliding gate here just to have another point of access, and that would probably be for light duty vehicles, not the, not the heavy, heavy duty trucks.
When you're talking about inside storage, are you talking about backing a trailer inside with the equipment on it to store?
So we wouldn't be storing equipment on trailers inside. The overhead doors are for the purpose of backing a trailer in if something is large and needs to be offloaded inside. For example, a lot of those, a lot of those large rooftop units, I'm talking about large air handling units, and we work for all the HVAC subcontractors. Now more than ever, especially with interest rates and delayed projects and whatnot, all of the general contractors we are working for are asking for those units to be stored inside when they're, when they've technically been outdoor storage usually. And that requires a large overhead door in order for us to back it in and then remove it with a heavy duty forklift. But as far as storage of trailers inside, no. It would just be, it would just be things stored either on, either on the ground or on shelves.
Are you going to be doing repairs in the trucks in the, inside or?
All repairs would be at our, our repair shop in, in Avon. Yep, so yeah, no, no manufacturing, no repairs, no vehicle cleaning, anything of that sort. It would just all be purely offloading equipment, putting it in its storage place and then reloading equipment to be delivered to a job site.
And the, the floors in the building, they're, I don't know if you can answer it or not, but the floors in the building, do they have to be reinforced to carry that stuff?
Nope. So, right now, I mean, the, it's tiled because it's a retail store, but essentially, we're, underneath that retail store is pretty much a warehouse. Once we demo and remove anything that resembles Kohl's, it'll, it's a concrete floor beneath. We'll clean it up and polish it, but about, that's about it. It's, it's dirty enough.
I think that's all I had. I know that, once you put the fence up, you're probably going to slope whatever the two, Smokey Bones and them, because some of them park in their parking lot too. That's their problem. Is there anybody in the audience that has any questions? Mr. Perrin?
Richard Perrin, Precinct 1, 7 Lennigo Boulevard. How many trucks a day do you expect?
So we would expect anywhere from 10 to 20 over the road trucks that deliver equipment to our warehouse. And they usually arrive anywhere between 7:00 and 11:00 a.m.
Okay, I was on the planning board when this so-called park went in, the High Tech Park. That back road was supposed to be for vehicles only to rebarack. The trucks were always supposed to come up the front road. I talked to Mark Tindales about it a while back, but I don't know if he's found anything yet, but he has looked into it. Now, this goes back many years, but that road was restricted for cars only, just like we did the same thing for the recovery center. They have to come into Avon, they can't come down Page Street. That road was for vehicles only. Thank you.
Anybody else? Sheen, nobody? What's the wish of the board?
I just feel like this is a very different use than we have there. I don't know enough about that industrial park. I was very interested in the restrictions. You?
Yeah, from my, from my research, there is no restriction for this, for this type of a use. You know, I think, and, you know, the previous speaker commented, for those of you who've been around long enough, you know, this started out years ago as the North Stoughton Industrial Park and was intended to be a traditional industrial park. I think, you know, combination of the market changing and frankly, the town's inability to attract tenants to that park, it, it changed. And now it's, it's a mix of anywhere from the Amazon facility to BJ's, to the Sinesta Hotel, to the restaurants, to offices. I mean, it's, I'm not sure how you would define it, considering all the different types of uses that are up there today. But I think probably the one that comes closest in similarity to this would probably be something like Amazon, but certainly on a much smaller scale and, and much fewer trips.
Well, Amazon's located in a different spot, sort of right in the middle of all this. And they have different ease of access options. I mean, I guess I just feel like I need to think about this a little bit more. I'd be interested in hearing a little bit more about the access and access. I'd like to know a little bit more about this fence and a little more, you know? We're taking a very large site from the industrial park that is currently, looks, it's what you just described, you don't know what it is. We're going to now fence it and put 10 to 20 other trucks. I mean, they may be the same size as what comes to Kohl's, but Kohl's doesn't have anywhere near that amount of truck access happening on a daily basis. Is this Monday through Friday or is it?
Monday through Friday.
That's a lot of additional trucks going up onto that roadway. We have, you know, residential uses that use that roadway, vehicular cars. I just feel like I need to think about it a little bit more. I'd be interested in hearing a little bit more details around your part, your, your travel plan and your fencing picture or something like that would be helpful to me. I'm not suggesting this couldn't be done, I just want it done in a way that is not going to just not be properly presented and thought out.
Right, now that's reasonable. We can, I think we can adequately respond to both of those issues, the, the access and, and the issue or question with the fence. That seems to be, if I'm hearing the board correctly, those seem to be primarily the two main questions or concerns. Am I correct?
Those are my concerns, I don't know if someone else has others.
No, getting out is the big, the trucks getting out. I don't see why that's going to be that less traffic that they can't open up the island so that they can make a left-hand turn, because that's going to be, that's not going to be easy for them to go up and, okay, turn around in that small circle.
I think, I mean, they're similarly situated in that respect to, you know, what, what Bob's Furniture has to do, what BJ's, you know, has to do, what, who else? I'm trying to think of who else is up there that gets, you know, a fair amount of deliveries, you know, truck deliveries, but, you know.
They also have a lot of retail, regular traffic. This is mostly going to be truck traffic. That's, I think that's more for the cars than, you know, and they're not going to have cars coming in that, from that direction. From the way that you're talking, you're going to have the smaller.
Right. Okay.
Yeah, I just think you're going to need to give us a little bit more and not just wait for site plan review.
Sure, no, that's fine.
What will the increased truck, I guess I'm also curious, what would the increased truck traffic, you know, what the frequency and the consistent, you know, high weight of those trucks, what would that do to the roadway that could, you know, impact the restaurants that are adjacent, right? I've seen other roadways in town where you have a lot of truck traffic, you know, taking a left-hand turn, and I could, you know, I've seen the roads get heaved up in the middle because of all that weight. You know, I don't, I don't know where that could be researched, but I mean, I think some information about, you know, what's in that road structure.
Sorry? That would be engineering anyways.
So I'd like to add that to the list of questions we'd like clarity on before we decide on this.
So, sort of, you're looking for a commentary from the engineering department about the impact of the truck, proposed truck traffic on the roadways there?
Right, yeah, where they would be turned, take that left-hand turn, because that could impact other adjacent businesses. And also where they would turn onto 138 to come and go from the highway.
I'm sorry, Jeff, what was that last one?
The, the intersection with 138?
139.
139, sorry, yes.
And what was the issue there?
The same issue, right? Like what would, what would the frequent heavy trucks, you know, coming and going from there, what would that do to the normal traffic flow? Right, there's a lot of people who, you know, cross those intersections and if, you know, the roads will, you know, decay relatively quickly, it could cause a lot of issues.
Okay. Just so I'm clear, are you folks looking for input from engineering on those questions or input from us or a combination of both?
I'd like a combination of both.
It's fine.
Okay. I can circle back with either Craig or Bill and, you know, get some input, you know, ask them to, to opine. I think Craig, and not to put him on the spot, I do see his name up there, I don't know if he cares to anything.
I am listening.
No, he was here. Hi, Craig.
Hello. Yeah, we'd be happy to give our opinion on, on that, those issues. Am I correct in hearing that you expected 10 to 20 trucks per day?
Approximately, yes.
Okay, yeah, I'd like to just do a comparison of what the Kohl's business was receiving for trucks on a daily basis, see if that is actually an increase or decrease in truck traffic to the site. So those are the types of things we'll look at. And then we'll take a look at your layout plan and see how the impacts on the, the turns exiting the facility onto Tech Center Drive, how the trucks will maneuver through there, so.
My own concern, I don't know if we would have access to the Kohl's information.
We might have an older traffic report in that area, we'll take a look for our files.
Okay.
Okay. Is the 10 to 20 trips a day also the trips of your flatbed trailers leaving? Does that include that or is that additional traffic?
Yeah, so that is, that's incoming and outgoing, so it would include our flatbed trailers.
Okay. I don't know how much time will be needed to get some of this information.
Much time you need, Barry.
I, I, I think if we put it over to the second meeting in October, that should be fine, October 17th. My next, the next case you have on the agenda tonight.
Do you have one there? I'll make a motion, we continue case number 4316 to November, I mean, October 17th at 7:32 p.m.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
This one is continued in November.
Motion, open case number 4318.
Second, oh, sorry.
Go ahead.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, I have. I have a request. I have a request. I gotta read this first.
Public hearing will be held in Town Hall, Conference Room B, Room 301, third floor, 10 Pearl Street. On September 19th, 2024, at 7:34 PM on the petition of Marcus J. Torscher, represented by attorney Barry R. Crimmins, case number 4318, for special permit under the Town of Stoughton zoning bylaw on November 18, 2015, as amended Section 3.1.4 Table of Use Regulations. Principal use is Part A, Residential Item Number Five. Conversion of existing ASOV, September 8, 1970, dwelling structure to a multifamily dwelling provided the total number of units in the converted dwelling structure shall not exceed four dwelling units. In order to allow for the conversion of the existing two-family dwelling to a four-family dwelling located at 220 Pleasant Street, further identified in the census plan 67, Lot 35, in an IU zone in said Stoughton. Any person designed to receive further notice concerning this petition provided by the General Rules of the Zoning Board of Appeal should file a written request containing his or her name and address with the board. Petitioners, representative, or any other person designed to be heard in this matter should appear at time, place designated. Sherman, Emperor Chairman, issued September 4th, in Patriot Ledger, issues of September 4th and September 11th, 224. And I have a piece of correspondence. Dear Chairman, Ebro, and members of the Honorable Zoning Board of Appeals, as you aware, the undersigned represents Marcus J. Torscher of 220 Pleasant Street, Stoughton, Massachusetts, 02072, regarding his application for special permit in order to convert the existing two dwelling, two-family dwelling to a four-family dwelling, a use which is allowed by special permit from the Zoning Board of Appeals under the Town of Stoughton zoning bylaw of November 18, 2015, as amended at Section 3.1.4 Table of Use Regulations. Principal use is A, Residential Items Number Five, conversion of existing ASOV, September 8, 1970, dwelling structure to a multifamily dwelling, provided the total number of units in the converted dwelling structure shall not exceed four dwelling units, to be constructed at the above referenced location in a residential urban IU zoning district. Please be advised that we are in receipt of the enclosed memo from Town Planner William Roth to the board dated September 17, 2024, in which Mr. Roth has raised some concerns about the proposed parking to be provided at the property for this project. Based on his concern, Mr. Roth has suggested the application request to continuance of the public hearing on this matter in order to revise the site plan to address these issues. Therefore, based on Mr. Roth's recommendation, we would respectfully request that the public hearing on this matter be continued to the board's meeting on Thursday, October 17th at 7:30 PM. On behalf of my client, I would like to thank you for your consideration of this request to continue the public hearing on this matter. Yours truly, Law Office of Barry R. Crimmins, Barry R. Crimmins, Esquerra.
Motion to continue case number 4318 to October 17th at 7:36 PM. What's that?
That was the case that was already on that day.
Oh, it's already on there?
Yes.
Oh. Okay, it was 7:30.
Second.
All in favor?
Second and a vote.
Second. Aye.
Okay.
Here we go. Motion, open case number 4307.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Which one am I asking? Canton Street. This is a continuance for 338 Canton Street. I haven't got my front page with me. Mr. Crimmins.
Thank you, excuse me. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. For the record, Attorney Barry R. Crimmins of 909 Washington Street in Stoughton, here on behalf of the applicant Hebrew Senior Life relative to the application for the comprehensive permit for the proposed 96-unit senior housing facility to be constructed on Canton Street. We've actually made a great deal of progress since we were last here before you two weeks ago relative to the comprehensive permit. If I, if I could use a football analogy, we're at about the two-yard line, I would say, to, towards getting this decision finalized. And although we, we continue to have the, the time constraints that my client alluded to previously, and I am remiss of having introduced Kim Brooks, who is with Hebrew Senior Life. Deb Morse could not be present here tonight. Kim is here on behalf of Hebrew Senior Life. So I guess we're confident that probably with just a few more days, we could hopefully get a decision in a form that would be acceptable to both this board and to us. And therefore, I guess I request, first of all, is going to be to continue the public hearing, but would I like to ask the board if it would consider holding an additional meeting next week to try to get this wrapped up at that meeting next week? I know Thursday is probably not good for, for Bill. There is a planning board meeting scheduled for next week, although his meeting started at 6:30, but I think he has a pretty full agenda for that meeting. I don't know if it would be possible to do either a Tuesday night meeting or a Wednesday night meeting, if, if the members of the board would be able to accommodate that request. If so, that's, that's what we'd like to do if at all possible.
When are you available?
I can't do Tuesday. I already have another meeting. I could do a meeting on Wednesday.
How early?
Um.
4:30?
No, but 5:30?
When, when are you guys available?
Will it be a virtual meeting?
Yeah.
If it's virtual, I can do any evening.
5:30?
Yeah. Again, if it's virtual, because I won't make it here.
Next Wednesday at 5:30?
Yeah, I can do that.
Wednesday?
Yeah. Can you do Wednesday?
Oh, I'm in the wrong month. That's the 25th.
Yep. I mean, I can, I can go later if needed. It's probably better to go later, but I'm trying to be kind to you.
Are you available?
Yeah, I can make that.
You wanna make it 6 o'clock then?
That would have to be helpful. 6 o'clock?
6 o'clock, okay.
That's fine on our end. Maybe Barry will be on the case.
Well, don't make a motion yet because I actually wanna raise another question to the board.
What's that?
I wanna ask the board another question before you make a motion to continue.
Well, I got another question.
Okay.
Timber.
Since I wasn't here, there wasn't actual testimony. It was all, do I need to sign that paper saying that I read all the stuff from that meeting?
I mean, in a belt and suspenders approach, I think airing on the side of caution, it would probably make sense to do so.
Okay. So we'll have somebody make it up so I can sign it.
I can provide a sample to Jack that I've used that you could sign.
I'll send it to Kristen.
Okay, right, right.
We can't, that means we can't close the public hearing tonight because we'll have to include that in the record.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
For what?
We'll have to include that in the records. We can't close the public hearing tonight. We'll have to just keep it open and do all of that at the next meeting.
You said you had another question?
So I have a question. I've done pretty, this version of the draft that you have before you has a significant amount of edits that I've put into place as well as some comments from me. It was, so what I did is I, I received the revised version of the draft the end of last week, and I looked at that one. And then I made some revisions and some comments that I wanted to discuss with the board tonight. Bill Roth responded to some of those comments with some additional revisions. And I looked at that today again and was able to provide further revisions to that. This is the version you have. I am happy to work with the developer, but I don't want to do that without the board's authority to bring this to a final version. So I would want the board to vote to give me that authority to sort of be the point person to finalize a draft with the developer because it sounds like some of my requests may have some legal implications for them. And I'm happy to hear what those are tonight so that this isn't done in some type of a back, you know, I want you to understand where I'm coming from. There are some revisions that I've made that are, to me, I feel pretty, you know, pretty strongly about. I don't know where the developer sits with them because I honestly haven't had a chance to see any responses.
If I may through you, Mr. Chairman, I don't think we've seen the most, if you made further revisions today, Marguerite, that we haven't seen that.
But they're minor changes. The major pieces that I had concerns about, you were provided with.
Perhaps if, if, if either you, Marguerite, or Kristen could forward that to us.
Well, you can have this one.
It'd be easier if I can get it electronically, you know, because of the edits.
Bill.
Yep.
Yeah. Does he, does Bill have that already, Marguerite?
Yeah, I sent it to Bill this afternoon.
Okay, I can follow up with him in the morning then.
He's not around.
He's not around tomorrow?
He's in North Carolina or something.
Oh. Okay. I'm sure somebody has it.
I saw him this morning, so I don't think he's coming back tomorrow.
Okay. I'm sure we, I'm sure we can get it from somebody.
All right.
Well, electronic copy would be, would be easier, Sherman, that's all, because of the edits.
I'll make a motion to have Mrs. Mitchell represent the board in making the final draft.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
This is the time I can say no, Sherman?
You wanna be chairman?
No.
Be careful what you wish for, Marguerite.
Do you, I mean, I think it would be helpful to review some of my comments. I know it'll take some time, but I want to be able to talk them through. Perhaps you have answers to them and that might resolve some of it.
Sure.
So on the first page, there's some language in here that I think we need to clear up around what was originally proposed, how much land was involved, and then what's now the current proposal. So many of those comments related to that, to that piece of it. I think there was originally more than five acres proposed. Ultimately, there was five acres and an additional 1.85 acres. And we just need to be clear for purposes of this permit that we know what was, what, what pieces of land we're talking about.
And I think we have a plan, can you correct me if I'm wrong, that shows both the five-acre A and R site on the one side of Simpson Street as well as the proposed parking on the opposite side of Simpson Street.
We do, and we can make sure the language is considered.
So that's what those first couple of comment, first couple of things related to.
Yep.
And then I also added in the reference to your project eligibility amendment request, project eligibility letter amendment request because you did submit that. So I think we need to, we need to reflect that in this decision. Some, the second page was just more stylistic. And the third page, I wanted to make sure that it was clear that the board has considered all of the verbal and written comments from abutters and members of the public in rendering our decision. So I added that in. There's, so we had proposed to us in multiple, of multiple submissions that 60 of the 96 units were going to be for households earning at or below 60% of the area median income, and 36 of those units would be it for households earning at or below 30%. I made that change throughout this decision to reflect that. I have a note from Bill saying that that might be something that needs to be discussed with the attorneys, but I can tell you that's reflecting what was proposed to us. So if that's changing, then that needs to be made clear to the zoning board.
Can I respond?
Yep.
So it's not changing. That is our, that's our intent. We have to request that. We are going after the maximum amount of project-based subsidies at the 30% level, but that has to get approved by housing and livable communities. So having that language in here is that further restriction, I mean.
Perhaps we can add some qualifications to it.
That would be great. If we could just get the qualifying language in there that it's, it's pending.
I think it's important if that was presented to us that it somehow, we work through language that reflects that.
Yeah. And obviously, 100% of them are affordable, so the rest would just be at the other, at the 60%.
Okay. So that brings us to page five, which I just did some rearrangement, and it sounds like, I don't think that should be an issue. So I guess I just rearranged some of the conditions to try to combine them. So in page six is where we started our actual conditions. There were a couple of different conditions, and I think honestly, I want to give credit to Bill because he took several different versions of drafts and put together a really workable first draft of this. I think he may have had a couple of different spots where he had similar conditions and just didn't catch it. So that's why we have multiple people review it. But my hope is that condition four is going to be talking about the final site plans, and it's only going to be within condition four, and that we have language about how that will happen. There is a proposal here that the final site plans get submitted to the town engineer for a review period of 45 days, and that for good cause, the town engineer could extend that review period for an additional 30 days. And the original language seemed to indicate that if there was no comments provided, that the final plans would be approved. I was, I'm not comfortable with that as a board member. I, I think that we're talking about the final site plans. We have, the town engineers should have the ability to make comments and to require changes to be made because this is, this is where we're gonna actually get into the final details of everything. So I've, I've proposed change language that says that if the applicant is notified by the board or the town engineers within the 45-day period that, that revisions are needed to the final site plans, then the revisions will be made and the time taken to do that will extend the 45-day period. I don't think that it's appropriate to have it just be automatically approved as submitted simply because, you know, we reached the end of this time limit. And frankly, 45 days plus even an additional 30 could be, I don't know what shape the final site plans are gonna be in, but that may not be enough time. So I'm pretty firm on that condition. I would assume that this board is as well, particularly because we're being asked to come up with a decision on a very quick basis. So I just want to share that with you, that that's one of the conditions that I felt very strongly about the wording on. There was some language in here around phasing. I believe this is only, all gonna be constructed in one phase. Is that right?
Yes.
So I made changes around that. So condition 11, which is on page nine, I did make some proposed language changes. I'm still not sure that I am comfortable with that. I, it's my opinion, maybe I'm not understanding the proposal correctly, but all on and off-site infrastructure needed for the project, in my opinion, should be constructed prior to issuance of an occupancy permit. This language right now seems to provide additional periods of time after the project is completed to do that. That might make sense if you were phasing a project, but you're not. So I feel like that should all be done prior to the issuance of an occupancy permit, and that, if I'm wrong, if there's infrastructure proposals that can happen after the fact, please let me know what those would be.
Okay.
There doesn't seem to be a condition in here about the process for final cost certification. I did raise that on condition 28. It seems like we could add it to the condition 28, but there needs to be some type of language about that.
Let's move on to page 13, Marguerite.
Yes, sorry.
So the reference to the cost, you want reference specifically to cost certification?
I think we need to have some type of knowledge about how that's going to work. I'm happy to see a proposed, proposed language from you guys about that, but I think, I don't see it anywhere in this decision. It's typically in comprehensive permit decisions that I'm familiar with. Condition 30 on that page, which is the one that was sort of proposed and revised to deal with the additional property that's owned by the applicant. It just says that six months after issuance of a certificate of occupancy, the applicant will work with the select board and town staff on a site master plan. I think this needs to be a little bit more specific. I mean, what does work with mean? Is this mean that you're going to start having meetings with them at that time? Are you going to be finished? I mean, I just think we need to be a little clearer on that.
Our original discussions were that we would start at that point, so we can put language in specific to that, make sure that works for you.
Yep. So I mean, if we, I think that's fine, but we should probably say, we'll begin conversations, and we'll continue to meet regularly until a plan is developed, or something to that effect.
I think that was a reference to the comment in the way it was worded by Selectment Gito, which was sort of very open-ended, if you will. So I think it just got carried forward from that.
And then I did ask for condition 31 to be changed from, this is the one about doing the concept design plan for the sidewalk along Simpson Street and Canton Street and Pushing Street, that, all that area. I asked for that to be moved to being provided prior to the issuance of a building permit, simply because of the amount of time that would be involved. If we ever take that concept design plan and do get grant funding and finally can start doing some construction, we're talking many, many years anyways. So, you know, in the meantime, I do expect that your residents will be using that area to access the school facilities. So I would rather have that happen, that concept design plan be presented to the town sooner than later.
Okay. And our, I mean, our residents, I'm not sure how many would be accessing that. I know we've talked about trying to be helpful and get that area done. Not sure how much access our residents will be using for the schools.
Well, the track, there's the track that gets walked on all the time, and the ball fields, and, and I don't know who will be living there, but it's a pretty active site that gets used by people in the community regularly. Tennis, I mean, I'm not sure, I expect you're going to have people who are active and, you know.
Yeah. And as long as, right, it's concept, so I think having a building permit time is fine.
I flagged condition 32 only because of the wording that there is a desire to try to have this, allow these units to remain eligible for inclusion on the town subsidized housing inventory. Legally, it goes off the town subsidized housing inventory a year after the permit is issued, if there's no building permits issued. So if that is something that the board wants, I don't think it's necessary, because we're above our 10%, but if the board wants that, then we would need to make this, this condition will need to read one year.
We wouldn't be able to meet because of our funding requirements, and just the timing of getting the funding.
So I'd be interested in hearing the board's input. That is not, I'm fine making, not making it tied to the subsidized housing inventory, because we are at our 10% right now, and I don't envision us losing it in the next year. They had proposed three years, that they would secure a building permit within three years of the filing of this decision. I think it, we need to have a deadline, so that we make sure this gets built, but...
Yeah, I know, we don't, yeah, we don't need that. I mean, none of our stuff is coming off.
Right.
That we have now, so...
The board's happy with three years, I don't mind that, and we just have to change some of the rest of the language in that condition. Does that seem fine with everyone? Okay.
Yep.
So condition 50 is another one that I feel pretty strongly about. So condition 50 talks about the waivers that are being granted, and the way that it was proposed was that any waivers that weren't necessarily listed, that might be needed as a result of the plans, that were, the final site plans would be deemed granted as well. I'm not comfortable with that being the case. I think that if that's the case, they should come back before us and let us know what those waivers are. I know that this is a typical dispute between developers and zoning boards. However, this, as I said, this project is being addressed in a very, very fast manner, and we really don't fully know. I mean, we're trying to support you in where you're at with your funding, but I think in exchange, this board needs to be more restrictive in what it'll look like down the road, and if you have to make changes, you need to come back and tell us what those changes are. If you need further waivers, you need to come back and tell us what those waivers are, and it may be that a public hearing is required. It will just, it'll depend on the waivers that are being sought, but that's what I'm asking for, and again, that's one that I feel pretty strongly about. So the language I've proposed is the way I would like it worded.
And B.
Yeah, continues, and then I deleted B. So that's another one that I wanted to talk to the board about. So condition 54, I added, this is the local preference, reference to the local preference for the affordable units. I added in employees of the, of Stoughton businesses only because that was referenced in the 40B guidelines, language that was quoted below. We hadn't necessarily talked about that, but if that's the language that's being quoted below from the guidelines, I'm trying to understand why that wouldn't be added to your local preference grouping of people. But there's a note here that the attorneys need to discuss it, so...
Yeah, I'm not sure.
Okay.
We'll work on that one. I'm not sure what the...
Okay.
If there's an outstanding issue there.
Condition 66 talks about, it's originally talked about a homeowners' association document, which clearly this is a rental project, so I don't know, are you planning on having a rental association document? There are pieces in this condition that I don't want to lose. I mean, we don't want to add additional bedrooms, we don't want to take spaces in the building that, and make, turn them into units, et cetera. But maybe we just eliminate incorporating that into some type of an association document? I just think that maybe you need to reword it based on whatever types of, I'm not sure what your, are you having leases? I don't know what your, what your...
Right, they will be leases. So I, I don't know if this was the language that was from the original that maybe got missed, or no homeowners, or leases, there, there won't be, there will not be a...
So I think perhaps maybe that just needs to be reworked, based on what you're going to actually be doing from a legal standpoint with your residents. And then I had a list of conditions at the end that I thought were missing. And Bill responded to a lot of that, so I think what I will say is I'm, I'm happy, you guys can all look at it, it's the last two pages after the signature lines, but I'm going to eliminate the last two bullets, because it sounds like those are already addressed. And I'm going to eliminate the bullet about the storm scepter units sizing calculations, and the bullet about the illicit discharge statement, and the bullet about the blow-up details of subsurface infiltration, and the one about, nope, that's it. So the remaining ones have to do with some of the passive recreation that's being proposed, and the use of the community spaces, which have been presented to us. So I think we do need to have a bullet, a condition that relates to passive recreation proposed on the property, and whatever types of community space use will be proposed. It doesn't have to necessarily be specific to everything, but I think we should cover that through a condition. There's also a condition that we need to talk about, the, what's been proposed to us is that the community will be able to use a multipurpose room at no cost. Obviously, there'll need to probably be some type of a use, you know, facility use perm request made, or whatever it is that you're proposing, but I haven't seen that proposed language. And something related to interior and exterior security cameras, the police department had asked for that, and you had agreed to that condition. And something about the water service to the site in the building of the fire, fire and domestic water service was something else that I had seen listed as being a condition that was agreed to. So I think those are missing still. It's the one relating to the, the fire and domestic water service. To me, those are the remaining conditions that are still missing that...
And can I, just to clarify with you, the walking paths that you're referring to here, we have walking paths designed into our property that will be adjacent and right near the property. That's all you're talking about, right? Not walking paths on any other parcel, or...
I don't know. Yeah, I'm not sure if you're planning on walking paths within the five-acre parcel, or if those, yes. So then, yes, if that's being proposed, there should be a condition about that.
Okay.
Because it's passive recreation that's being proposed on the, on the site for use of the residents. So those cover, that covers the majority of my edits. I also had some, you know, typographical and stylistic edits, but if there's other edits that the rest of you want, I'm interested in hearing that.
And as you think about that, we are so thankful for all the work. I know you and Bill Roth have done a ton of work, and we have advanced this so much. Thank you.
I'm good.
Good.
I'm good. I gotta read it.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you. This is, this is really good, really clarifies a lot of things.
No problem.
Are we all set now?
So now I'm fine to continue.
Then I'll make a motion, we can continue case number 4307 to next Wednesday at 6:00 PM.
Second.
That?
That was September 25th.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
I was just seconding the motion.
Oh, okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. 6:00 PM, right? 6:00 PM, correct?
Yep.
Right.
And you said virtual.
Thank you very much. Well, either way.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Do we have to make a motion to be fully virtual, or no?
Not, I don't, we weren't doing fully.
Well, he want, you can give a call, you're gonna, you want to be virtual.
I can only join virtually.
Yeah, so...
Are the rest of us in person, or either whatever option we want?
Yeah, whatever. I mean, you can make...
Okay.
I mean, all of your meetings are hybrid. They're, they're live and they can log on through Google Meets.
I'll be here, or in there, wherever we end up doing it.
It'll depend on my workday.
Sorry, a virtual option?
Right.
Dual, simulcast, that?
The agenda usually indicates that people can log on virtually through Google Meets.
Oh, also for a special meeting, I just want to make sure that's also going to apply.
Did we vote?
We voted on continuing it. Should we, should we make a motion to make sure that there's a virtual option for this meeting?
I think that's...
I don't know. I'll make a motion just in case, that there's a virtual option for this meeting.
Second. Make it virtual.
Option, virtual option.
Virtual option.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
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 That's it?
Thank you very much. Thank you, Marguerite. Thank you, everybody.
Motion adjourned.
Second. Motion adjourned, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
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 All in favor?